I like your background. Doesn't look like you have too bad of a time there being quarantined, right?
He's muted.
Yeah.
You're muted, Ray.
So I'm on this, I said that I was at the south of Milford on the Riviera.
Oh. You know, sometimes I was told, just as a tip, that sometimes the virtual backgrounds will make you pixelated and disrupt your audio. So just keep aware of that.
Okay, thanks. No, it hasn't so far.
Oh, that's good. We, I was on a Zoom with someone who had a virtual background and they sounded like a robot for the entire.
Oh, really? Let me know if I do.
You were fine the other day, Ray.
Thanks.
I'll be raising my hand when I want to say something.
I think Justin is moderating.
I think he sees the raise of the hand, right, Justin?
Yeah, I don't think I do.
Nobody else does except the host.
My hand is raised. Do you have your little chat box open, Dr. Koutaya? My hand is raised.
I don't see it. So I think just the host sees it. Justin, are you there?
He's here, but I see his picture. He's there.
I don't see your hand raised.
No, I just unraised it here now.
I think just the host sees it.
No.
Okay.
Phil, do you see the hand raising? You're on mute. You're on mute.
You're on mute, Phil. We can't hear you.
Justin, are you there? What good is the host if he can't hear us? Phil, you're on mute. There you go.
All right. Hey, it's Justin here as well. We're socially distanced apart, but I saw the hand raise and was able to to lower it as well.
Okay, so you'll, you'll see the hand raising and give Phil that indicating?
Yes, that's what we've been doing. He's got, he's got the ability to see the hand raise. I don't. So he just signals me who is asking a question. So it works out well.
It's too bad that everybody doesn't see the hand raising so that everybody knows what order or whatever.
It comes in numerical, not numerical, but in the order in which you raise your hand, it's on my screen as who did it first.
Right. It's too bad that we can't see it so we know who's raising their hand.
You can, Ray, under participants, if you open it up on the right-hand side, you'll see like a little hand come down for anybody who's raised their hand. I don't know what order they'd be picked in, but you can see it.
I'm raising my hand right now, right, Justin?
Hold on.
I see it, Ray. Yeah.
You see it?
I see it too.
Oh, I don't even see it. Maybe because I have a virtual background?
Did you, do you have your participants tab open?
Maybe your screen's not big enough, Ray.
The what?
Maybe your screen is not big enough to pick it up.
Maybe because of the virtual background. I'm lowering it now.
Yes, sometimes depending on the size of your monitor, more features show up automatically.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep, thanks.
You should have the feature, but the icons will show up. It takes them off if you've got a, like if you're working on from a laptop, just to convince space.
Right.
What island is that, Ray?
Uh, south of Milford, Charles. Hi, Amy.
I've never seen, I've never seen a palm tree close to Charles Island.
Well, I brought it from home.
Oh, there you go.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, Jim.
You look very healthy, Dr. Koutaya.
Thank you. I just went up and put on some makeup for the first time in a couple of weeks, I think.
Well, you did, you did justice. You look good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. You too. Everybody looks good.
I look good because I'm hidden off camera.
You have a great picture, Ellen.
Lovely headshot, few of you have, yes.
Hi, Phil and everyone.
Hi, Ellen.
Hi, Ellen.
That's a nice, that's a nice headshot there, Ellen.
Thanks. Thanks. Campaign, that was campaign mode. You know who looks the best? He looks like it's his, his grammar school outfit, Justin.
Yeah, Justin always looks good.
I remember that, that look from Live Oaks.
Help stop him on camera.
And nobody beats the palm tree, man. Come on.
It's getting too windy. I might have to come in.
Yeah. I'm gonna mute. Sorry.
This meeting, does anybody know how to use this wave button?
The wave is a, the wave, it's like a reaction, I think. Where's the?
Just scroll down. I'm gonna, I'm sorry I'm yelling, but I'm gonna mute myself. Scroll down the participant list.
It's like a.
You have to scroll to the bottom.
You mean wave or hand raise?
Or hand, hand raise, so we don't have to speak.
Yeah, just let me finish.
There's, under the participant listing, there's a little button that says raise hand. So down underneath the, at the bottom of the screen, if you point down there, there's some tabs. You'll see it says participant.
You have to scroll down.
So if you, when you click on participant, it will open up a window to the right of all the pictures.
Oh, okay.
And then there's a raise hand tab, a raise hand button.
And a mute and an invite.
Okay, I'm gonna be getting the, sorry, the meeting. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome back to the 2020, 2021 budget deliberations. Today is April 22nd, 2020, and we are conducting a remote meeting through the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. As we begin, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure we follow. So we make the meeting runs efficiently and all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the city of Milford's website. During this meeting, if members of the Board of Aldermen would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand or chat features via Zoom. All participants will be muted during the meeting unless recognized by the chair. After being recognized to speak, please state your name each time before you speak. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, with all goodness and liberty. Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Genetasio. Alderman Genetasio. Alderman Golden. Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman. Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Corrente.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Winterp Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
I'm here also, Janet Golden.
Alderman Sutton. Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitally.
Here.
Alderman Willis.
Here.
I'm here also.
I, I got you. Twelve present.
There's twelve present. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I will entertain a motion to come out of recess.
So moved, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We are now out of recess. This evening, we'll be hearing from the Milford Board of Education, Dr. Koutaya. The floor is yours, Dr. Koutaya.
If I might, Mr. Vitro, Chairman Vitro, may I make some opening statements first?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to connect with you this evening. I do appreciate that you've all taken the time to be here. And before Dr. Koutaya and other members of administration take you through our budget details, I would like to just share a few things with you. The Board of Education takes very seriously its responsibility to bring before you a budget that has been thoroughly considered and represents the needs of the district. This budget excited us because we saw it as an opportunity to move the district to the next level, so to speak, and to build on recent work, which honors our vision statement that Milford Public Schools will be a progressive school district in which students are prepared to achieve at their highest level, surrounded by an engaged community that is proud of its education system. In considering Dr. Koutaya's proposal, the Board did make some reductions. We reduced line 4305 grounds projects by $265,000 and we reduced line 7340 furniture and fixtures by $173,024. This amounted to a total reduction of a little over $438,000. And then you have the Board of Finance that sent you a recommendation that was another $500,000 reduced from that. So things are certainly different today than they were back in January when we adopted the budget and even when we presented it to the Board of Finance in February. At that time, I spoke about the Board's use of the feedback provided to us by our stakeholders during which our superintendent search, during our superintendent search, which guided our work to bring forward a budget that represents what our community wants and needs, if it is to remain a vibrant, thriving and desirable place to live, work and raise a family. The Board is grateful that the advances the district has made under Dr. Koutaya's leadership in several areas put us in a good position to handle the challenges that we faced during this unprecedented time. The one-to-one Chromebook initiative and moving towards a paperless district have helped as everyone adjusted to a working and learning remotely. The intentional decisions that we've made to use high-quality and high-impact resources and instructional practices, including the importance of building relationships between staff, students and families, have made a difference in what our remote learning looks like today. We all need to keep in mind, as we wade through the midst of this pandemic and ultimately emerge from it, there is potential we will see much greater need among our young people on many different levels as we move into the 2021 school year. You know, no one has a crystal ball to tell us what the coming year will look like, but we still have a responsibility to provide the best services we can to our children and our families, for whom many, the school connection during this time is what is helping them keep it all together. So I thank you for your dedication to our community, all the time you put into it, your past support. And Dr. Koutaya now will share some details and then we can answer your questions. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Glennon, and thank you to all the Board of Aldermen for your, for an opportunity to talk to you this evening about some topics that quite honestly, we haven't talked about in about five weeks. So this evening is really exciting for me and refreshing. As you know, we have been deeply steeped in the work taking a school district of about 5,700 students and 700, about 700 certified teachers completely online in a matter of a couple of weeks. And I would like to start by saying that I believe that we were able to do that quickly and efficiently because of this community's commitment to public schools long before I ever came into Milford. I think it's because of the history of support of resources for this public school system for many years that poised us, placed us in a position where we could very quickly put our learning online. And quite frankly, as I work with our colleagues across the state, it is unfortunate that so many communities are not up and running to the degree that Milford is. But we are holding our head above water very proudly. We believe that we have a system in place that is to the best of our ability, meeting young people's needs and family needs. And that has a lot to do with our elected officials' support and our wider community's support of our schools. So we all had a hand in the successful online learning that we're engaging in right now. So I want to just start with a couple of disclaimers. I am home with two dogs. I gave them bones and have treats right here in my reach, so they may start barking, at which time I might mute myself, give them a quick treat and come right back. So I'm sorry ahead of time if that happens. I'm also working with an additional display screen, so I may not always have eye contact with you. That is not any sign of disrespect, but I'll be working off of two screens. So if you see my eyes moving over, it's because I'm engaging in information about this evening's presentation off of the screen here to my left. I'm also going to be sharing my screen. Justin and I gave this a test run yesterday, so we're hoping that it'll work as smoothly as it did yesterday. This presentation could be sent to you tomorrow and our full budget is available online under the Board of Ed tab, under Budget on the milforded.org website, in the event that you want to access that even this evening. So here we go. We're gonna try to share a screen, okay? Does everyone see that?
Yes.
Yep, great. Okay. Yes, I see it.
Yes.
Fantastic. Um, so know that I can't see all of your faces, so if I need to stop or if I need to be paused, if someone could let me know, Mr. Vitro, okay? Thank you.
Yes.
So I will tell you that in all my years as a superintendent, this is probably one of the most difficult budget presentations that I am making because I am overwhelmingly aware of the state of affairs that we are in right now. I understand what our community, our state, our nation is experiencing and the pain and the difficult times that we are experiencing. And I did give this a lot of thought and thought maybe I should abbreviate my presentation this evening. Every, everyone has had many long days, but I decided after a lot of thinking that I am going to give you the full presentation this evening because our children deserve that, that as superintendent of schools, I need to speak on behalf of our 5,700 students and speak to you about our goals and needs for them as we saw them in January and as we see them today. So I will walk you through what I believe are some of our goals and successes and what our dreams are for the future. And I will also address this evening. So I believe this pandemic is, is and will continue to impact our school system, our young people and our staff. So please know that this budget proposal for next year is built on three key pillars. And that is our vision for the learner, what we want for all students as they walk through our school system, preschool through 12, in the areas of scholarship, personal development, citizenship, creativity and innovation. It is built on a relationships framework that has five key components that we believe have actually brought us closer together, not only when we were in schooling in a bricks and mortar environment, but especially in a virtual environment. It is through relationships that I believe we are helping families and households really stay together and our connection between teachers and students is really at the core of our success in our school system right now. And the third piece is our model for high-quality instruction. So this budget is not built on passing fads or the latest and greatest trends in education. It's actually built on what we sincerely believe and have developed for the very specific individual needs of Milford students through the vision of the learner, the relationships framework and our own model for high-quality instruction. It is also built on the budget priorities and budget, budget assumptions that were considered and voted on and adopted by the Board of Education on October 14th, 2019. I will not read those budget priorities or assumptions for you, but they can be found on pay, Roman numeral page four and five of your budget book or that budget document that you access online. Overall, the priorities for the Board of Education included the development of a core instructional program, enhancement of wellness and development of all students and staff, the provision of ongoing professional learning, maintaining effective class sizes, providing 21st century physical spaces and resources and ensuring that students engage and have opportunities to engage in extracurricular activities and athletics. But before we move on to what we believe we want to accomplish for next year, a little review of what was made possible this year. We hold a very high graduation rate, 95.1, and about 85% of those students seek to go on to further education. That was the class of 2019. We named 191 AP Scholars last year, a very high number for a school district our size. That's the breakdown of the AP Scholars. We have engaged in some work that is being recognized by many in the state, including that of the State Department of Education, CAPS and the Connecticut Center for School Change, and that is our work of high-quality instruction. We kicked it off last year. We're able to engage 70 of our staff members and about 36 of our students. Some of the feedback we received from our staff, it's the best professional learning that they've ever had in their career. We hope to expand that in the upcoming budget. Ms. Glennon did refer to our one-to-one Chromebook integration. We did prior to COVID's closing of school buildings, had a one-to-one program for grades three through 12. Officially, we are a preschool through 12, one-to-one system now. And that was made possible because of adopted budgets that supported the purchase of these technologies. I'm happy to say that in about a year's time, we were able to roll out a device to every third through 12th grader, which is pretty, a big, very big lift for a school system our size. We expanded our fitness rooms. A very, very proud moment for Milford Schools is that we started world language instruction in the elementary schools. We started in grade K through one. When we're done rolling out our preschool through five elementary world language, we'll be one of only a very few. I think the last time I checked, it was eight school districts that actually have a preschool through 12 world language program. So most certainly a cutting-edge step for Milford Public Schools. We've improved our, improved our electronic communications, which I believe has come in exceptionally handy during these times. We launched an app of our very own and a digital backpack where anyone can find all of our information in one central location for all 14. We continued to expand our internship program. We started a, an initiative that we hope to expand next year, and that is through Flex Furniture. There's a lot of research that shows that a physical environment has a huge impact on academic environment. We started this at the middle school and we hope to extend at the high school. Hope to expand into the elementary schools in the next year. We took on 109 projects since the summer in upgrading our facilities. And just as a point of reference, we do transport about 3,900 students to and from school on a daily basis. So as we look forward to the 2021 budget, the Board of Education did approve a year-over-year increase of 3.109% after the savings that Ms. Glennon have already explained to you at the beginning of this presentation, amounting to $98,34,756 as a 2021 budget. But before I go into what we believe we'd like to accomplish in the 2021 school year, I do want you to understand best what we're experiencing. And I am going to assume that you don't know this, so I am sorry if you already do, but I just wanted to make sure that there was an even foundation for all of us to understand. The Governor's Executive Orders and we were about 85 to 90% already there in our decision-making and actions. But the Governor's Executive Orders has primarily required us to continue to pay all employees and honor all of our contractual obligations, including that of special education and transportation, albeit the transportation was negotiated through this process as well. So please know that our budget is almost 80% made up of salaries and benefits. So our budget for the 1920 school year is being expended almost exactly as we had planned, despite our school building closure as of March 13th. So all of our salary accounts and benefit accounts are being expended. We believe that that is the right thing to do. That's why we had already taken steps prior to the executive orders being issued. So there are lots of towns that may have the misunderstanding that there will be huge savings coming out of the education budgets. Please know that we are moving forward and paying all of our employees. We are also feeding young children breakfast and lunch for seven days a week, not just Monday through Friday, but Monday through Sunday. We are, we are issuing about 8,000 meals a week right now. This is a good time for me to recognize the incredible work and effort of our food service department. And they are out there every day packing lunches and delivering and hosting curbside pickup on Tuesdays and Thursdays at East Middle School and Law High School. And our technology situation is, as I already mentioned, a pre-K through 12, one-to-one initiative. We also sent home devices with many of our staff members, not all, but those who have a role during this time of school building closure. It did require us to purchase some additional technologies because of the need to swap out Chromebooks that were aged or that need repair during this time. So we did have unexpected costs in the area of technology going into COVID-19. There are many, many conversations amongst superintendents all across the nation and even as recent as this afternoon on a phone conference with the Commissioner of Education, on what will education, what will schooling look like when we return? We know for certain a few things. We know that our students will be returning to school with even greater need. And I think our greatest need is going to be demonstrated through social, emotional and mental health needs and not just in our young people, but in our families. So I do not believe that we will just be able to open our doors like business as usual in September. We are going to be dealing with a culture that I'm referring to as educational recovery. I know many across the nation are talking about economic recovery, financial recovery, providing stimulus money to small businesses, corporations, organizations, families, all warranted and should be part of a dialogue. But I encourage Milford Public School, Milford as a community, sorry, to engage also in a dialogue referred to as educational recovery. If you think our students were last in a bricks and mortar building, school building on March 13th, they will not return to school until the end of August. That's nearly five and a half months. While we are providing online learning, there is, that is never, ever a replacement for face-to-face instruction in a classroom with a teacher and a full class engaging and interacting with one another, providing feedback, getting one-on-one and small group attention. So while this budget dreams, big dreams for young people, because of the need for educational recovery, we may need to revisit how those funds are allocated, how they are prioritized in the upcoming year. And honestly, I say to you as a board, an elected board for Milford, we don't have all the answers yet, but we do know that we will need resources and we will have greater need in our young people socially, emotionally, mental health and educationally. And even within Milford, to speak to point three, we are seeing in our town, across the state, across the nation, that virtual schooling, this need to stay home and stay safe is a priority, is really highlighting the discrepancy and differences amongst the economic and resource and racial and differences that exist among our citizens. So we are seeing that even within Milford about with families who are differently resourced than other families. And we are trying to meet those needs the best we can virtually, but we know that there will be an impact on our families, most certainly when we all return to school and that our young people all have varying degrees of need. I just wanted to be able to state that before we start talking about our dreams as we crafted them in January, that we realize that our dreams may need to be modified. But we don't believe that we'll have fewer needs. We know that we'll have greater needs and resources will still be required. So when we take a look at developing plans for the future, we also take a look at the achievement of our students. And if you notice, I'm just throwing some numbers up here, not for a deep dive, but just for a visual scan. So if you follow the graphs with me, you'll see that most of the bars on the graph, and this is AP, are pretty steady across the years. Here's SAT, it's pretty steady, nice flat numbers, very consistent numbers. And I will share with you as superintendent of schools that I have a dream that we break the plateau and that we start realizing an increase in these achievement scores. And while they won't be numbers that we chase with every ounce of energy we have and try to overdata our students and staff, by focusing on high quality instruction and the vision of learner relationships, I believe that these numbers will start to increase. But this, the baseline that we have right now is that we are pretty consistent, but yet flat achieving school district. And my goal is to break the plateau and start to see an increase in these achievement scores. And the primary strategy in that is to continue with high quality instruction, professional learning for our teachers, to really provide an environment where students are highly engaged and own the learning. So in this budget, you will see that the high quality instruction live season two plans are exponentially grown, going from 70 teachers to what we hope will be a couple hundred teachers can engage in professional learning in the upcoming school year. Additionally, we hope to decrease class size guidelines in grades three through five. In my professional opinion, up to 25 is too large of a number. And what I would say now that we are in the midst of pandemic crisis, I don't believe that a number of 25 students in grades three through five was ever the right thing, and especially now, especially with the growing needs of our young people, 25, fourth or third, fourth or fifth graders in a room is just too much. But class size was most certainly be impacted if this budget realizes any additional cuts. It is an investment lowering class size. It is an investment of FTEs, and that is typically one of the more expensive items to invest in a school district. So that is one of our goals to decrease class size in grades three through five. We'd also like to expand world language so that learning can continue for those current kindergarten and first graders to include pre-K through two. We've had a review done of our preschools and kindergarten classrooms, and we would like to move forward with a focus on more play-based experiences with learning centers and flexible furniture. And I think now more than ever, our primary students, learning through play is going to be critical. And we wanted to open our libraries up during the summer for three of our elementary schools. Of course, we will have to see what the executive orders allow for opening up our buildings this summer before we move forward with that plan. Very exciting adventure that I hope that we'll still be able to take next year is to open up an elementary science lab in each one of our schools so that one day this stock picture can be replaced. Their very own Milford Public School elementary kids getting this excited, if not more, so that we can develop little scientists starting at the age of five. We're also looking to upgrade our equipment, technology and furniture in our high school science labs. Now more than ever, it is important to invest in social, emotional learning. We were going to start in our elementary and middle schools next year, the Wingman Program. That actually is a student-run, social, emotional learning program. In the area of some system improvements, particularly in technology, there's a long list here on this screen that I'll have you read. I won't read every bullet for you. But some highlights include getting some coding robots. We know that coding is a a growing career path, so we wanted to engage students at a very young age. We also, as we were mentioning, a one-on-one Chromebook initiative with grades three through 12, we didn't feel like in the classroom, a Chromebook would be the best learning device. So we want to invest in kindergarten and grade one interactive touch devices. There's some other highlights there that I will allow you to read through. You'll see some of the robotics continuing in through the high school. We're also going to start a multi-year process to replacing the climbing walls and starting with Live Oaks being the oldest one. It is essential, a critical part of our physical education curriculum M program. We're also going to work on, sorry, going to work on the cardio room improvements at East Shore Middle School and the fitness rooms at Foreign and East Shore, bringing them more in line with the other middle and high, middle schools and high school. We're going to continue to invest in our music program by purchasing additional instruments, replacement instruments, uniforms and necessary furniture. Dr. Fedigan and the Teaching and Learning Team is going to start an official seven-year cycle of curriculum review and development. This is going to be some of the most critical work along with high quality instruction and vision of learner to really bring us forward, as I was talking about earlier, on breaking the plateau of our achievement to start seeing an increase. I believe part of the backbone of that is a common written curriculum. And these are the areas that we will be taking on next school year. We are, we added a community connection center at Pumpkin Delight this year through a grant and found it to be so successful. We also have a family resource center on the north end of town. And then our proposal in this budget is to have a, some sort of a community connection center on the east end of town, giving us three places where families can truly connect themselves with the resources in the community. We are finding particularly in this time, our community connection center, our coordinator is very busy helping families right now stay connected and get resources that they may need. At our high schools, we hope to add a technology maker space at the academy, upgrading and refreshing school counseling suites and library at Foreign as we did at Law this year, including the Student Support Center. And we're hoping to start meeting the mental health needs of our high schoolers better by establishing physical spaces, such as something called like a Zen Den, potentially may not have that name in the future. But our administrators actually are starting to roll out this week a virtual version of a Zen Den where students can go and access mental health resources during this time. So we envisioned even back in January, the need for this prior to our pandemic for our school year next year. And as Ms. Glennon already stated, that we are continuing to invest in taking our school system online and moving away from paper processes. And there is a part of this budget that takes most of, not all, but almost all of human resource processes online through an integrated system that we hope to purchase. So getting down to the numbers, we of course looked for savings throughout this budget building process. So you will see a 7.2 FTE net staff reduction. And then there were reductions in these other areas such as workers' comp, contracted services, utilities, gas and support in those other areas, amounting to almost a half a million dollars of savings prior to looking at what we can add. We most certainly look for efficiencies in this budget building process. This is a graphic, a breakdown for you to, just to get a visual on how our budget is laid out. As I mentioned earlier, that most of our budget is salaries and benefits. Specifically in this proposed budget, 77.6% is salaries and benefits. And you'll notice also some other categories that will be difficult to cut back on, such as transportation, contracted services and tuition. That makes up another 12.87%. Those, all those categories come up to about 90% of our budget, primarily being outside of student programming. So additional cut would most certainly impact those larger categories of salary and benefits. Here's a breakdown of the budget by category, by object code. I won't read these numbers to you, but you'll note the object code and the additions and reductions in each category. We're happy to answer questions that you may have specifically by those object codes. And this graph represents the breakdown of the increase alone, not the full budget, not like two slides ago, which was a breakdown of the full budget. This takes the $2.9 million proposed increase and then breaks it down to areas on how it is broken down. So if you'll note, of the 2.9 million increase, 1.6 million is in the category of salaries, primarily through contractual obligations. 347,000 is an increase in benefits and so on. You'll see the other categories as they are increased and represented in 3.109%. So just want to bring you back to two slides you've already seen that we are trying to forecast the impact of the COVID-19 virus and the school closures due to that. We're doing our best to forecast it. We know we will have to reprioritize resources for next year. And I don't believe we'll be able to start our school year the way we normally do. In fact, on our conference call today with superintendents, one superintendent proposed that we may even need to lengthen the school day to give students more to close this gap that is obviously being created by not being, by missing so much school. And just want to close out by saying that this plan is built on three solid pillars of what we believe will bring us to the next level of achievement and success for our schools. Three pillars that our system has vetted out with our staff, our families, our board, and we're very committed to a vision for all learners of relationships and high quality instruction for all. That's the end of my presentation, Mr. Vitro.
Thank you, Dr. Katia. I'll entertain any of the aldermen's questions at this time towards the Board of Education budget. Any alderman wishing to ask any questions pertaining to the Board of Education budget can do so at this time. Alderman Willis.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much, Dr. Katia, for that nice, nice, excuse me, the nice presentation there. I just, I'm curious. I know Milford Public Schools offers Spanish as one of the world languages. And what other languages do we currently offer?
In what particular grades, Mr. Willis?
Um, okay, so we're going by grade here. All right. I'm not, not one specific grade, just overall, I guess, I'm not really interested in the specific grade. Just how many different languages do we offer throughout all the grades?
Dr. Fedigan, could you give us a rundown, a rundown on all the languages pre-K through 12, please?
Absolutely. At the elementary school, as I mentioned, the past year, we've launched Spanish for grades kindergarten and first grade. We've had Spanish also offered at the middle school. We just this past year brought back Spanish to sixth grade, and we've expanded in the middle school to offer French as well. So all three middle schools offer Spanish and French. And at the high school level, in addition to Spanish and French, we offer Latin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Willis. Is there any other questions for many of the aldermen for the Board of Education? Alderman Grant. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Ms. Glennon and also Dr. Katia for your presentations. They were very helpful in taking and, you know, laying out the budget and the plan for, for the upcoming school year. The question that I have is actually from multiple phone calls that I've received and letters that were received to the board as a whole about the media aid position that is being cut from the budget. And, you know, from the conversations that I've had with the different individuals that are currently in that role, it sounds like what they do is take in, you know, really provide support to not only the teachers, but the students as well, because the students have come to know these certain, you know, professionals and the students have come to trust and know who they can go to. And the concern that I have with, with them being eliminated is that, as you mentioned in the presentation, as we know, there is going to be a difference, you know, change in the upcoming school year. And the students are going to need some security. So this, have you given any thought into this may not be the best year to make such a dramatic change such as that?
Thank you for that question, Alderman Grant. Yeah, I have given a lot of thought on how to best reopen schools, make that transition for students. It's on my mind every day. So let me complete the story for you. 15 media aid positions. Fifteen media aid positions are being eliminated, but we are replacing those with eight integrated instructional support positions. So it's not that we are eliminating the positions, period. It is that we are eliminating the media aid position as it is constituted now, because we believe we have the need for a different type of position in our elementary schools. And any and all of those media aides are welcome to apply for those positions, therefore providing us with the opportunity of potentially keeping some of those people. They do function in a role now that was crafted at a time that met the need of that time. But because of our one-to-one Chromebook initiative, because the changing nature of our libraries moving toward a learning commons, because of the proficiencies that our children walk into technologically, we believe we have the need of a different type of position, a position where this person will be in schools and this person will interact with adults and students. So there will be a position, it will just look very different, but there will still be opportunities for relationship building. And those relationships are appreciated now, but moving forward, we just need a different type of support position. Our schools are filled with adults that have relationships with our young people. So if we were completely changing a school environment where students were going back to a place where they didn't know anyone, then that would, I think, be much more related to not having the right transition for young people back after this pandemic. But I, I know, and I hope you trust, that our schools are filled with many, many loving adults who are waiting to take our students back. So I think that answers most of your question, but I'd like to add that in building and dreaming forward, I know that this elected body nor any other would like for me to just come with, ask for more and more and more. That the direction, the directives I'm given by my board, and I believe, is responsible leadership, is to find efficiencies in a system so that you can continue to grow and improve. So how irresponsible, I believe, would be of me as a leader to only come to you and not look for efficiencies, not look for changes that we could make that are still going to be good for our kids? So I believe as the instructional leader of Milford Schools, this is in the best interest of our young people and is being responsive to our current today, now need. I hope that answers your question.
Alderman Grant, is she answer your question okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome. Is any other alderman? Alderman Ferante.
Hi, everyone. Through you, Chairman, Dr. Katia, I want to thank you for your presentation. I have a daughter in sixth grade, and through the direction of the school board and what you have done, I, I see the benefit of the way that you're implementing your vision for our students. I also see during this period of time with the kids learning at home, that depending on the proactivity of each student, they may have, there may be a differential in terms of what they're able to benefit by and where a gap may lie for them as we go forward. So depending on the governor and restrictions being loosened, are there any opportunities for students to have a bridge over the summer, toward the end of the summer as school resumes? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so glad you asked that question, because I did, I did talk to Mayor Blake about this a little bit and have been talking to our team about it. It all depends on the executive orders. If we could open our school buildings this summer and offer, I love the word you used is bridge. If we could build a bridge, I would love to, but that's very expensive to do. It's an expensive bridge. I would, I could see us partnering with our community, if there are interested partners, to provide experiences academically and socially, emotionally, and extracurricularly, particularly since I believe some families are going to be ready to get packed to work, right, some parents? And I don't know how affordable summer camp is going to be this year. So I would like, as a school system, to do our part if we have the resources for that. We'd have to pay teachers, we'd have to open up our buildings, we, we would have to, and I think the need would be large. You know, we typically run a summer school for our students that have a gap in their learning and aren't exactly ready to move on to the next grade, so we have that little bridge to get them better ready for September. But it's, it's a smaller number. I believe it'll be a much larger number. So we do have thoughts about potential summer experiences, but they're contingent on two things. One, that the governor would allow us to open our buildings and have that number of students congregate again. And two, depending on what resources are available to us to run some type of summer school.
Thank you.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Katia. You mentioned there was talk about lengthening the school day. What would that do for the current contractual agreements with the teachers and the staff? And would you have to renegotiate?
Thank you for that question. So that, that dialogue occurred on a conference call with superintendents. It was, I didn't bring that up, it was brought up by someone else, but certainly would be on the list of options. We would either have to renegotiate or engage in a, a, a non-salaried approach to that, so maybe an hourly compensation, treat it like tutors and such and not. So we'd have to talk to the union, of course, and that has a lot of implications for after school, particularly at the high school. So I don't know how possible that would be for us, but certainly could be for our younger students. So we would have to go through likely a dialogue with our bargaining units, I think would impact more than one unit, and potentially negotiation, or at least a memorandum of understanding.
So it could potentially cost us a little bit more money in the long?
Yes, educational recovery is going to cost us more money. I think we need to be ready for that as a nation. It's not just in Milford. Our, our young people are not going to come back ready for the next grade or course like they did in the past.
Okay. Thank, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Dr. Katia. Dr. Katia, thank you so much for the very fine presentation. I'd like to return to the subject that Alderman Grant raised earlier with regard to the media aides. Obviously, this is because of the dislocation of, of educational personnel in our school district is kind of the most controversial subject in this year's budget before we've even reached the, the issue of the pandemic and, and educational recovery that you mentioned in your opening remarks. It would seem to me, as, as Alderman Grant brought up, that in this period of unprecedented dislocation of our normal practices and so forth, that replacing 15 media aides, and based on my research, the media aides have been part of our school district for, since the mid-1990s, the beginnings of the digital revolution, when it became so much a part of our society and so much a part of our educational experience, there's a permanence to that. There's a certain relationship formed between the students and the, and the educational leaders. I do recognize, Dr. Katia, you are the educational leader of our city, and I think you need to chart your vision for improvement of our schools and the most efficiencies that we can realize, but certainly in the face of this unprecedented era in our, most of our lives, I think that in terms of, in terms of educational recovery, having 15 people that are, the immediacy that that provides with the individual students to replace by eight more specialized, more technological individuals, granted perhaps with a greater proficiency as far as implementation, but particularly in the primary and the middle school grades, won't there be a, a loss of, for lack of a better term, I'm telling you, immediacy, more one-on-one, more people that are, that are going to be there to work with the students on, in a one-to-one basis? Some of the media aides petitioned us about this, gave us some anecdotal information about their typical day with, with the implementation of the Chromebook program, which was, you know, widely applauded, but how much this depends on, especially in the younger grades, a lot more one-on-one relationship. And I'd like to just revisit that again for a second, I don't mean to dwell on it, but it is, as I said, this is, would be the most dramatic difference from this school year to the next school year. And in light of the recent developments in the past few months, is there any other way or can you see any merit other than bringing these people back in as, as media specialists that we would be able to maintain that close relationship that the current arrangement has provided for us and for our students?
So I don't know what your question is. Can, can you just clarify what the question?
My question is, I, I don't feel there was enough explanation is, when, when Alderman Grant asked if, given the educational recovery you referred to, that so dramatic a dislocation as, as the replacement of 15 individuals in all, in all of our schools, is there, is there any other way that you may see this in light of recent events? That there might be some advantage in not going ahead with that in the coming year based on the experiences we've had in the past several weeks?
So the structure that I built leaves an instructional support person at each high school. There's one person at each high school. There will be two people shared amongst the three middle schools, and then four people shared amongst eight elementary schools, and those individuals will be assigned geographically. So I believe Pumpkin Delight may be about a mile away from Meadow Side. I, I may be a little off geographically on that. So one person handling or supporting and forging relationships over two schools is already done in our school system. We have speech-language people that share schools. We have a, a number of individuals, professional staff, that are able to forge relationships with young people and adults, feel like they're part of a school climate, and still give great support to young people by not being in a school building full-time. So we will have eight of those people still with us, and they will be able to provide the one-on-one and small, that's, the role is different. We, the role of the media aide and the role of what we're proposing are two different roles. And I am proposing that we need the, the role of the integration specialist, I forget the full title now, much more so in our future plans as we move forward. So, and as part of high-quality instruction and vision a learner, particularly through technology, our, we are encouraging children to, to problem solve and work with peers and others. And in the area of technology, I don't know how many of you have young people at home, but a lot of our young people are teaching the adults at home how to work on these technological platforms. So I do hear what you're saying, Alderman Smith. I don't believe that there will be a change in this plan. I believe we have already positions in the district that are not full-time in schools that prove to us that adults can have meaningful relationship with kids if they're not in a building full-time. Whether we re-craft this position or not, I am going on record to say we do not need 15 of these positions. We need eight. And that is a budgetary efficiency that I will stand by. And also, it's an efficiency in the system that is responsive to our current need. If I just leave 15 people in the media aid position, I am not being responsive to student and staff needs right now.
Thank you. I, I do understand you. Again, though, I'm thinking in, in terms of recent developments, saying that eight integrated as a media aides can, is efficiently and immediately take the place, eight people can take the place of 15, I'm sure you're much more well-versed in the, in the details of this proposal and have thought this through. I just stopped to think in terms of what's happened, and we come back to school September, and they have, there's, you know, now there's eight people that are traveling between two schools, taking the place of one media aide at each of the, at each of the grammar in the, particularly the, the grammar schools and the middle schools. It would seem to me you would lose less of that personal relationship, and it would be reduced by half. I mean, that's, I, I'm sure, and I don't mean to monopolize the time here, but I, I do think it's something that might bear some greater explanation in terms of how the public sees this, how parents and, and students will receive this. And again, I, you know, I, I respect and understand that this is past your board, they understand it, they have full confidence in your decision to do this. I'm talking about it really just in term, in light of the new situation and the new reality we'll be facing in the coming school year. But I, that, I, I think you've answered my question satisfactorily, something you feel that can be done with the, with better economic efficiency, with better organizational efficiency. And I guess the question as far as how the relationships pan out with, with the students, especially the younger grades, I think might, might merit some further discussion at another time, but thank you very much for your, for your answer.
Thank you for expressing your thoughts, Alderman Smith. I appreciate that.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Superintendent Katia. Thank you for that excellent presentation, and I don't envy your position. Never again in the history of my life did we ever go through something like this. A couple of things that I would like to know, and I know the media aides, it's such, I can remember when we shared nurses at one point for two or days or three days until they went full-time. I, I sometimes I don't think it's the position rather than the individual in some cases, but maybe this will tie things up. In the contract, is there a RIF clause in the Paris contract?
Mr. Richitelli, and it's not a para contract, it's a media aid contract.
Right. Whatever the contract, is there a RIF clause?
Mr. Richitelli or Ms. Kapazna, are you here? Hi, Jim.
A reduction in force where if you reduce the employee, that that employee needs to bump somebody else out? That's how we, when contracts are written and years ago, and if contained a RIF clause, it was a reduction in force so that if person A is reduced, he, she could bump last person in to that position of qualified?
There is in the, the media aides are in the same union as the food services workers, believe it or not, and there is a reduction in force. However, the new positions that we envision will be in the IT department and will not be in that union. We've had discussions with the union, we've, we've talked to the union, we've made clear to the union that all of the current media aides, we will welcome them. we welcome them applying for the positions. But these are different positions. There are different skills at it. There's a different job description. And it no longer will be in that union.
So there's a change... Jimmy breaking up, so it's very difficult to hear you. I don't know why. Is it just me? But I don't know. So I'm understanding that the individuals are now going into a different union or that position will be... That position will be in a different union? Is that what you're saying?
No. The positions... No. Can you hear me?
Wendy, can you help? Yes, I was jumping in. Can you hear me better, Fred?
I can hear you whoever said that.
That's Wendy.
Wendy, I can hear you.
Okay. I can explain it, I hope. So library media aides are in the food service union. So they cannot riff... They cannot bump any of the food service people. It's a totally separate category. So there's no RIF clause as you're explaining it because they cannot bump our food service employees.
Right, that almost seems like oranges and apples.
And no, they will not go into another union. It's a totally separate job.
Right. So I kind of think it's a contractual kind of thing, an oddity and an anomaly because of the fact that why would you put in a certified or a para within a union with food workers? They should be... Well, that's something that they needed to work out because it doesn't make sense to me. I know when we negotiated contracts, you always had a RIF contract that indicated the fact that if you are that individual who's going to be displaced, then you would be able to bump the least seniority person in that union and take it over. So I understand that. So sometimes the clarity is that nobody has any leg to stand on if you don't have a RIF clause within your contract to protect yourself. So that answers my question. So it's not that they don't have a RIF clause, but it's just the union they're in doesn't seem to fit their position. So it was negotiated way back when, when created, whomever created that contract. My other concern, Dr. Kataya, is the fact of opening school. You had indicated a fact that there are some alternatives. And one alternative that you heard about was the fact that you could lengthen the school day. I mean, do...
Pardon me. I had my hand raised and you didn't see the flag. There's a lot of distortion since Jim Richatelli spoke and it's ongoing. So I don't know. Can we clear that up? I can't hear you now, Alderman Vitale.
You can't hear me?
No. Now I can. Whoever... I was agreeing that there was distortion.
Right. Dr. Kataya, if we... So do you have any ideas as to maybe what the new school year would look like as far as alternatives? Because I've heard things like if you can lengthen the school day, you can lengthen the school week, maybe thinning out classes, which may be staggered timing, double session, keeping seniors, have no senior class next year, keeping everybody at the same level. So there's been crazy non-judgmental kinds of things happening with brainstorming some of these ideas. But do you have any ideas to your alternatives that you may be able to discuss with us at this point as to how you see school opening in September?
So let me get my crystal ball out and we'll take a look.
I know, it's tough. I know. I know, it's tough.
So my answer is not going to be concrete and likely not satisfying.
That's okay. I just...
But what I do know is that I've asked Dr. Fedigan to start working on revisiting where we start in the curriculum. You know, just as simple as this week, we had meetings about what resources to purchase in mathematics that came up. We're not sure if we should buy the workbooks for the beginning of the school year next year. We're wondering if we should use the spring workbooks to start the fall. So I believe what most certainly will occur is a modification of the curriculum where we start in the curriculum next year for all grades will need to be revisited. I'll tell you, I'm not a fan of the extended day. While it was discussed among colleagues, I think there's a stamina issue when it comes to now lengthening a school day and interruption to what makes some kids blood pump. Sports, music, art in the afternoon, family time, even though we're getting a lot of it right now. I don't know about it an extended day. So I believe it's going to be a multi-year recovery. We're not going to just close the gap next year. I think we're going to be recovering educationally, just like our economy, right? Just like our community. It's going to take us multiple years. So we may see the impact on this in education, in our budgets, in our curriculum, in our professional learning for the next three to five years. So that's probably the best answer I can give, Mr. Vitale, at this time. Knowing that we're only in Week Two of Phase Three, which is our most interactive phase of virtual learning. We think we'll make some modifications to make it a 3.1 version. And we are just this week, if I'm going to be honest with this group, turning our eyes back to normal operations again. Like, we're just starting to talk about curriculum again. We're just starting to talk about budgeting. And so all of our efforts have been just trying to get us online.
And I agree with you. And I think stamina is going to be the number one piece in this whole thing with kids going from nothing to a lot. And just take it for what it's worth. You know, the fact is that having everyone stay where they are, having no senior class next year might not be the worst thing in the world. I mean, that eliminates a lot of that three-to-five-year kind of thing you're talking about. The cracks don't get bigger, kids don't get into it, do it. The pushback would probably be enormous. But the fact is that you've got to do what's best for kids. And I have all the confidence in the world that you're on that track and the Board of Education is doing a fantastic job in that area. So good luck with you. I just don't envy your position. I know you're working hard. I know a few of the superintendents. And I never see some of them that I'm friends with. But the fact is that I know you're there all the time. But again, I will say that keeping kids where they are for the next year might not be the worst thing in the world. It might be economically feasible. It might be socially, emotionally feasible and where the prep push and the pressure doesn't exist. So thank you for everything you're doing.
You'll get a few more letters from citizens if that's what we decide to do, I'm pretty sure.
I'm sure.
Alderman Beatty.
I just wanted to indicate that there was distortion and make sure that it was fixed and it was. Thank you. That's it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any other Aldermen have any more questions for Dr. Kataya?
I see two hands up.
Alderman Gator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Thank you, Dr. Kataya, for your presentation. During it, you mentioned that you were looking to possibly reduce the class size in Grades Three to Five to up to 23. Do you have a sense of how many classrooms would be impacted if things were to stay as anticipated?
I believe the number is four.
Would that then be an increase of four teachers?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. If we don't reduce class size, it will be four classrooms impacted. So because of the reduction in class size, there's an increase of 1.0 FTE in the budget rather than a savings of 3.0 FTE. So if we keep everything the same, we would have saved 3.0 FTE. Because we changed the guideline, we are proposing a 1.0 increase in FTE. Is that confusing?
So, yes, let me say it back. So instead of then, if the classrooms across the city were reduced up to 23 in those grades, it would, as opposed to being a net of reduction in three headcount, it would be an increase in one.
Correct.
And if it was to remain then up to 25, it would be a reduction in three FTEs.
Correct. Did I get that right, Jim? Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Winsmith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Chairman, I told you I'd get the hand raise function down by the next meeting. So here we are. And through you, Mr. Chairman, to Dr. Kataya. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was fantastic. And obviously, we appreciate all of the countless hours that you and your team have spent on not only the presentation, but the budget as well. I wanted to just touch briefly on what the other Aldermen have spoken about briefly here, and that's the media aide positions. So going through the public testimony that was submitted regarding the library media aides, one in particular caught my attention, and that was Kylie Eberts, who is a library media aide from Live Oak School. And she was talking about some of the statistics that come along with the library media aide position. And again, stats vary from school to school and from aide to aide. But it was indicated that the library media aides check out and shelve over 600 books during the class time and another 100 or so during the week. And not only that, but it was indicated that 150 out of the 250 Live Oak students under the second grade level will not have Chromebooks. So that also would exacerbate the problem for students who don't have that Chromebook resource. And so it seems to me that the library media aide position in situations like that is crucial. So I guess my question would be, how can you cut those positions if there are certain situations in certain schools that really do require them?
So I'm not sure that the stats that you just shared constitute from me and my knowledge that they would be required. I think that's a pretty heavy description. And I don't know about the stats that you are quoting, but I do know a few things. I know that there are technological devices available to all of our children. So the stat that 150 kids in a particular school will not have access to a Chromebook is only part of the story. They have access to technology in that school. So I'm sorry that it's being depicted that children at Live Oaks do not have access to technology. I take offense to that message, actually. And our proposed budget bakes into it the plan to purchase interactive devices for kindergarten and first. And we have class sets of Chromebooks for second grade and then Three through Five, one-to-one. The stat around checking out books, I don't know about your lives, but my life has become very much more technologically efficient prior to being required to stay home. To the point where I check out my own groceries at the grocery store. Our young people know how to check out their own books. Now, I'm not saying that that is going to be a 100% independent activity. In fact, our folks in IT are already working on an app and a program that will allow young people, as young as five, by the way, to walk into a library, pick out a book, and check it out, and check it back in. And I believe that we need to believe more about what our kids can and can't do. I think we're putting such a low bar on what our young people could do with technology and so much stock in what we have to have an adult help them with that we may be overscaffolding and over-supporting young people can do a lot more. So checking out and in of books is, I think, something that we can have our young people do and we already have solutions for. But I think that even all of us, if we were to take a look at our own lives prior to COVID, we've experienced efficiencies. And our young people, many of you have children. You know how tech savvy they are. So checking in and out a book, I think, is not going to be a skill that's going to be difficult for young people. And I can assure you, Alderman Smith, Live Oak School has access to devices.
And thank you for that. And again, what I just said is not supposed to offend you. All I was doing was reciting testimony that was submitted by this one particular library media aide. And the library media aide did not indicate that they do not have access to technology entirely. They were just citing a certain statistic of certain students that don't or won't have Chromebook, okay?
I'm sorry.
It wasn't meant to offend at all.
The offense comes in the apparent or the reported inequity that our students have at Live Oaks. If the stat is 150 students out of 250 do not have Chromebooks, that is representing, I think, an inaccuracy and inequity that I, as a superintendent, and quite frankly, the Board of Education, should take offensively in that we are not treating all of our children equitably. So when it comes to equity for young people, I'm sorry, I get a little passionate about that.
Not a problem whatsoever. Like I said, just addressing the public testimony. So that was the first item. The second item that I have is it was either you or your office or the Board of Education had sent out a book and there was going to be some sort of seminar with respect to the book.
Community talk, yep.
Yes. So that book, and I read that book that you sent along. And it was a great book. I thought it was wonderful. So I guess my question would be, were there any items from the book that you implemented or will implement in this next upcoming year or the future?
Yes. Thank you for asking that. You read the book.
I did.
So we plan to bring that back, that whole idea of reading it as a community. And the intent of that, while I have ideas, I really want to engage our entire community around what plans do we want for our young people. So it would not be genuine of me to walk in with a preconceived notion to say, "I want this and let's use this book to get there." That would not... That's poor leadership in regards to that. So I was really hoping to use the book as a springboard for dialogue on asking our greater community, inclusive of our elected officials, "So what do we dream for our young people moving forward? How can we help inform the Board of Education, the administration, develop goals as the goals of the Board of Ed are expiring this year?" So we really wanted to help inform our future goals through the dialogue of this book and as informed by a greater voice.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And thanks for reading it.
Is there any more questions from the Aldermen at this time? Alderman Tranquilly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Dr. Kataya. Dr. Kataya, is there any discussion about removing Common Core from the curriculum? And how do you feel about Common Core? And the reason why I'm asking you that question is because it was good to hear that you were not in favor of lengthening the school day because I believe in family time after school. And I think that that would affect by lengthening the school day, that would affect time that you can spend with your family after school. So that was the reason why I'm asking you basically how you feel about Common Core.
Well, I haven't heard that phrase in a few years. So let me tell you how I... My philosophy on how I believe we should determine what we want our kids to know and be able to do without bashing Common Core. So I don't know if you picked up on in my presentation, I talked about high-quality instruction and that we're not basing our work on the latest trends in education. We're not just chasing after the latest fad. That we built HQI, is what we call that, high-quality instruction, based on what we believe in Milford. What we believe here centrally... What we believe here centrally, what we want for our young people. And we didn't go and hire someone in California to come tell us how to do it. We are building it here based on the expertise in our educators. And so whether Common Core is being mandated anywhere any longer, I don't really believe that it is. It does inform national and state standards. It still lives in the background. But let me tell you a little bit about our curriculum building process. It is done all by us. We write our own curriculum. We are bringing in our teachers, our administrators. We are doing all the research, and we are writing our own curriculum. We're not just grabbing the Common Core off the shelf. We're not bringing someone in from Texas to deliver their curriculum. So whether it's called Common Core or even NGSS, as much as I love the NGSS, and those are the science standards, Next Generation Science Standards, I believe we need to take the NGSS and make it our own. So I don't think that there will ever be a third-party vendor that can ever convince me that they know what our kids need. Does that answer your question?
Sure. I appreciate your honesty. Mr. Chairman, if I can.
You always get that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, if I can, follow-up question? Can you, Dr. Kataya, can you explain more about the new Wingman program that you mentioned in the, in your explanation of the budget for next year?
So the Wingman program was started by a family who lost a first grader at Sandy Hook. And the program trains student leaders to be go-to people and then also train other young people on how to be a go-to person. So this, this family wants to make sure that every young person has another person of significance in their life, that no one, no child will ever feel like they're alone and they don't have somebody. And the best person they feel like, particularly in the middle of school years, high school years, are peers. Actually, we know that mom and dad goes lower down on the rank the older your child gets. So it is a student-led peer program of being a leader in a school, standing up to bullying, ensuring that everyone has a friend. So you'll see in action, student-led assemblies. There is actually like a student leadership group at each school. They meet regularly. They make plans for the school. They have adult or faculty advisors. I think I pretty much covered that, right, Dr. Fedigan? Did I leave anything out?
You captured it all, Dr. Fedigan.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Does that help, Mr. Tranquilly?
Yes, she was breaking up a little bit, but it's basically a mentoring program. So I like it. It sounds.
You're mentoring, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if you do have trouble with the Wi-Fi connection at your homes, if you too dick it off video, it will help your audio. So again, you have to temporarily take off your video. It will improve your audio connection.
And Mr. Tranquilly, we believe the Wingman program or peer mentor program is our next step in our social-emotional learning curriculum, because we started in Milford with it primarily being an adult-led initiative. And the natural next step is to now engage student leaders in our social-emotional initiative. That's why we took that step.
That's, that sounds like a great program. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you, Dr. Kataya. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
You're welcome. Alderman Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Kataya, since you were talking about the curriculum and today being Earth Day, I would have to ask, can you talk about the importance of in teaching environmental science, environmental justice, sustainability, climate change in the Milford schools?
Yes, thank you, Alderman Grant. Well, I can speak to its importance in that it's important enough for us to make it a priority in our curriculum. Not only is it part of the NGSS that I referred to earlier. So it's part of a academic curriculum, but I think if you go into our vision of the learner, there are parts, there's a section that really focuses on ensuring that young people have an awareness and develop a responsibility of advocacy, advocacy for many different areas, but in particular, those things that are important to us, such as our earth and green initiatives, et cetera. So I think it is important enough from an academic skill set and knowledge, but also as part of our citizenry.
Thank you very much.
Is there any more Alderman questions out there? I don't see any, and I don't hear.
One, Ms. Vitro.
Alderman Genetasio, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Kataya, for taking all of our questions and your detailed presentation. Just looking over your budget book and the Board of Finance's proposed budget, I see that it looks to me you were cut about $938,000. Is that correct?
By the Board of Finance?
Yes.
No, I think it's $500,000. Mr. Ruchitelli? He's nodding, yes.
500?
Yes.
Okay, because the numbers, the number on your budget that you submitted is $98,472,780. And then looking at the Board of Finance book that I have, it's $97,534,756, which leaves a difference of $938,000.
Are you looking at the superintendent's proposed budget or the Board of Ed proposed budget? Because the Board of Ed cut my proposal. Ms. Glennon, you started off with that number?
Correct, yes. When you combine the amount that the Board of Ed reduced Dr. Kataya's request plus the Board of Finance reduction, that is a total of $938,000. But the budget that we, the board, gave you reflect, or gave the Board of Finance reflected $438,000 from Dr. Kataya's request. And then they reduced it further by $500,000. So you should be looking at the board's adopted budget.
I just wanted to have that clarification.
So this one.
I appreciate the clarification.
What was the, what was the number that you were, what was the initial number you started with in terms of the full budget? Yes, so that was Dr. Kataya's original request.
And then you, your board cut it.
We reduced it by $438,000. So the, the total budget, proposed budget in our proposed budget book is $98,034,756. Is that right, Mr. Ruchitelli?
So Ms. Glennon, what were, what was the justifications of your cut for $438,000? Can you share that with the members of the board?
Yes, we reduced the grounds project by $265,000, because there were two projects that ended up being funded through Mayor Blake's Capital Improvement Plan. And they were bonded. So that was the, it was the oil, replacement of the oil tanks at the two high schools. And I believe it was the Live Oak School, some of the grounds work that had to be done at Live Oak School.
Was that the traffic?
Yes, the traffic issue at Live Oak School and the playscape. So that was $25,000. And then we reduced furniture and fixtures by $173,024. We, we decided as a board that, this reflected the flexible furniture, the new flexible furniture. And we decided as a board, rather than going all in, we wanted to see Dr. Kataya piloted a little bit at the elementary school first. So we reduced that amount to allow her to get some furniture and pilot it, but not jump all in with it until we were sure what we wanted.
Okay, that makes sense. So, Dr. Kataya, when you met with the Board of Finance and they recommended the cut, did they give you any feedback? Was it a targeted cut? Did they share anything with you, or they just came up with this number?
No, no feedback.
Nothing?
Not that I recall, sir. It was a virtual, we weren't allowed to be in physical attendance. We watched virtually. But Ms. Glennon, to my memory, there was nothing targeted, no feedback.
That's interesting. And based on the Board of Finance cut, what's your perspective overall, Dr. Kataya?
Alderman Genetasio, we haven't had, I'm sorry to say this, we haven't really had an opportunity to digest that and go back into our priorities for next year because of everything that's been happening. So please don't think poorly of me for not doing so, but I think we've just been trying to juggle going virtually online. But philosophically, I will say to you, we'll try to keep it away from kids as much as possible. But every cut gets closer to kids, and with a budget that is almost 80% people, when you start cutting, we cut more people. So there was a lot of talk tonight about not wanting to cut people. We have move-forward obligations. We have contracts. 80% of a budget is 80%. So we'll try to do our very best to stay away from children and keep all of our employees, but that just becomes more difficult with more cuts. So we'll do our best.
If I could just add one thing to that, Mr. Genetasio. The, the board views the initiatives that are being proposed in this budget as being part of a larger picture. We, when we hired Dr. Kataya, we directed her, and our intent was that she would look at the big picture in Milford and give us her recommendations as to what we should be doing and what we need to do to move, to move forward. And I will say that the elementary systems in Milford had not been deeply and holistically looked at in a really, really long time. So a lot of the, the work that she's done has been, you know, relates to elementary school. And that's, I think, somewhat intentional. It's, the board views it as being the developmental years, and we want to see, we want to see some attention given to what's going on during those, that time that will then, as kids move through the system, they're going to build on that development as they get into middle and high school. But it, we really directed her to take a really good look at all the systems in Milford and give us her recommendations as to what changes we might need to make, what we should do a little bit differently, and what we have in place that is working really well and we should keep. So we have appreciated her candor in terms of the direction that she's helped us, helped us with.
Well, thank you, Ms. Glennon, for the explanation, and thank you, Dr. Kataya. And thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions.
Thank you, Alderman Genetasio. Any more questions? You're welcome. Alderman Gator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Perhaps this is for Mr. Ruchitelli. In the budget that's before us with the $98-plus million, does that, are there line items in here? I look, maybe I missed it, for the school nurses, the crossing guards, or half of the SRO salaries?
Yes. Can everybody hear me now?
No, Jim, try turning off your video.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, better.
Okay, can you hear me? I'm using the same device that I use every day. Let me, the answer, the answer to the question. Want to get your repeat a little time?
You want me to repeat?
Yeah, if you go ahead.
Sure, I was in the budget.
So nurses are on the city side of the budget?
Right. Nurses are on the Board of, in the Board of Health budget on the city side. Crossing Guards are in the city budget in the police department's budget. And last one was what group?
SROs.
Or the police.
SOs are included, yes. SOs are included under Security Services in our budget, count 3305.
Okay, half, half of it.
Half of them, and half go to the police, is that correct? So in effect, those would be additional costs of running the school system, even though it doesn't show up on the Board of Ed budget.
That's correct.
That's correct. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Beatty.
Yes, I stood up for a minute to stretch my legs. I just wanted to get back, of course, to the superintendent and to the staff. Thank you very much. It goes without saying. And I also appreciated the comments about the food service personnel and the remarkable work that they're doing. And maybe teachers will finally get the respect and admiration they deserve. That said, I just want to go back to wordsmithing a little. I apologize to this, for this, but I think it's important. When we use the word "cut the budget," the request from the superintendent's office, which goes to the Board of Ed, doesn't represent a cut. I'm afraid with the, the public listening, we have virtual meetings, that there might be something lost in translation. A cut would be a cut from last year's allocation, and the Board of Education is cut. And I think it's a very important distinction to make. There was a reduction in the request. Now, maybe that in and of itself, people don't want to have happen, or there's a controversy about it. But it isn't accurate to say that the Board of Education budget was cut by whatever. The proposal was reduced. Then it was forwarded in the correct process. So we would look at last year's allocation and see if it decreased from this, and then talk more clearly about it. And then lastly, when I looked at the documents, I too was trying to figure it out like we all are, what is what? And I think that it was pretty generally known that the least obnoxious cut, if you would, would be in the furniture allocation, even if that's a phased-in plan. But what's Ms. Glennon said about it's not discarded as an idea or a goal for the future, and that's in the documents, but that it wouldn't all be done now. And so the, the reduction from the 900, whatever, thousand to cut by 500,000 or down to that, the reduction is to accommodate. And I just made the same mistake and used the word "cut." So I think that that clarification is the distinction that the public needs to hear loudly and clearly. Thank you.
To your point, Alderman Beatty, even with all the other reductions, the increase in the Board of Education's budget still represents the largest increase in the last 10 years. Just wanted to make that point.
I am very aware of that. So from the last commentary, and I know it was sincere and genuine, you wouldn't get that. And I'm afraid tomorrow would be the message that somehow the Board of Ed was drastically cut or whatever. Anyway, I think that's enough said. Thank you for that clarification, Phil.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you too. Jimmy, can you hear me? Jim Ruchitelli, you're on mute. He's still on mute. Can somebody take him off mute?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I have a question. Sue Glennon, obviously, indicated the fact that when Tony had, Alderman Genitazio had indicated the fact that it was like a $900,000, $900,000 cut that was from the superintendent's proposed budget. I'm going through the Board of Education budget frantically to find out where is the bottom line on the Board of Education budget, what page?
Sure. If you, the, the best place to go is in the beginning, in the executive section, the executive summary.
Okay. Page 13?
And then that's the bottom line, total Board of Education budget. And you'll see it on that line.
Okay, I'm at, I'm page 13.
Yeah.
Where's the bottom line in the 2021? I don't see that big figure.
Are you in, you in Roman numeral?
Roman numeral 13 under executive summary.
Right. And, and on Roman numeral 13, the bottom, the very bottom line says total Board of Education.
Okay, see, so it's the 98034?
Yes.
Okay, so from that point, the, the Board of Finance, because in the, in the budget from the Board of Finance, they just put their number down, which was, or it was subtracted already, 97534. So if we subtract the 97534, we get something like 500,000 plus, a little more than 500,000 dollars that's cut from that budget.
Correct. The Board of Finance reduced it to 500,000 dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you too, I guess to Dr. Kataya, or maybe to Assistant Superintendent Jim Richatelli. One of the, one of the marquee items on your budget proceedings this year had to do with the science labs. And I just wondered if either Dr. Kataya or perhaps Mr. Richatelli could just give a little brief overview about that in terms of its educational objectives and also its fiscal or its budget implications.
I'm happy to discuss with you our dream for science labs. We are hoping to instill in young people the thoughts of potentially being scientists, engineers, anything in the STEM area at a very young age. We believe that we have come up short in that area in Milford, in our elementary schools, despite great teachers and highly, high expert teachers. But we don't believe we've provided teachers with the curriculum or the resources to really start that type of experience, starting in kindergarten, particularly since the next generation, science standards were were adopted by the federal government, I believe in 2014-ish. Dr. Fedigan, correct me if I'm wrong. And they, they gave states five years to adopt and implement. And here we are in 2020, and it probably hasn't seeped any deeper than fourth or fifth grade in Milford. So we have a sense of urgency in the area of science. We believe that particularly in elementary schools, it's very difficult to set up genuine inquiry-based hands-on science experiences when a elementary teacher is teaching reading, writing, math, social studies, and everything else. To set up a lab and to break it down and actually have something meaningful for students to do, I think is very difficult for elementary teachers to pull off because of time constraints. So we believe that every elementary school will have a science teacher with a science lab. There'll be rotation in how students, kindergarten through fifth grade, will experience that science lab. Dr. Fedigan and her team will work on writing a curriculum that spans K through 5. Of the science lab include eight full-time teachers. So that would be eight FTEs for the elementary schools. It includes money for furniture, equipment, supplies. So staffing, furniture, equipment, and supplies are all built into the budget for the science labs at the elementary schools. It's one of our biggest, highest-leveraged strategies for improvement overall in the system. We believe it has a system-wide impact that starting science labs in the elementary actually will lift the capacity of all of our children through the whole system in, in time, of course, and establish a career path that I believe will be responsive to pre-COVID economy. I don't know what the economy will look like later, but I don't think our, our globe will ever have enough scientists. And I think Milford needs to do its job in helping to grow scientists, so.
Thank you, Dr. Kataya. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any more? Alderman Ward Willis.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, to Dr. Kataya. I was just wondering, in a line item here, you have boys hockey and girls hockey. They are separate line items. And I was just wondering why they're separate line items, and also, why is girls hockey significantly less the money that's allocated?
I'm going to let either Mr. Richatelli or Ms. Glennon answer this, because there's a lot of history here.
Sure, I'll be happy to answer it. Mr. Chairman, through you, Alderman Willis. Would the, the cost, as you know, Milford Public Schools is in a hockey co-op with law, foreign, and plat tech. Are some fully funds that, except for a small portion, their participation fees that we still have, have been greatly reduced because the board has increased its support for the Milford Indians hockey team. The reason for the difference is because the girls, we don't host a co-op. Our girls play in a co-op with Notre Dame, Fairfield, and Westin Public Schools. And so Notre Dame hosts the team. Our girls pay $15, or the, or the fee per girl is $1,500. Of that, Milford Public School pays 1,300 of it, leaving the $200 parent participation fee, which is the same as what the parent participation fee is for the boys. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I think you pretty much answered my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Beatty. Alderman Beatty, are you there?
Here, I am not. I don't have my hand up now. Again, raise hand, I'll lower it. Thank you, I'm all set.
Okay, is there any other Alderman questions or comments?
I'm testing you, Phil.
You're testing me? Alderman Parente.
Thank you, Chairman, through you, to Dr. Kataya. I wanted to end up just talking a little bit about, or asking you, rather. As we are advancing in technologies with such rapidity, our kids, and I see this firsthand with my, my child, they have a certain amount of command over their own studies and their own choices around how they're using their technology. And what are the processes that will be in place for social-emotional learning pairing up with that as we go forward to kind of keep them in an understanding of their place and time with their age as they have more command in the adult-like fashion with technology?
You know, we're already tackling that. And now I think we have to ramp up those efforts. We, along with all of our academic curriculum, we, I believe, have been ahead of the curve on social-emotional learning curriculum and our initiatives in that area. And there is a renewed focus because of some new leadership in this area that we were able to reconstitute some positions at the central office. So there actually is a greater focus on integrated technology, instructional technology. And so what we'll see in the revamping of curriculum is greater focus on how to be better responsible users of technology. That will likely be a greater focus in the future. But two, I, I think some lessons out of COVID include better balance and self-care as related to our devices. So I think it's teaching us that there is so much interaction with technology, and now we're being forced to stay home and interact with those loved ones, that there are lessons likely to come out of this phase of learning that will inform future phases of learning around balance and self-care. And it's the appropriate role of technology in balance and self-care. So I know that our instructional supervisors for SEL are already infusing that. So it, it will likely be more of a focus, but it already is somewhat of a focus now. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
It does. Thank you. And I just want to end by saying, really admire your leading us into this kind of next phase with our school district. I know that the media aid issue is a tender one. And so I just, as we got through that transition, I just want to say I really value the work that they have done on behalf of our city. And I'm sure many others feel that way too. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Are there any more comments or questions from the Alderman?
May I close with something, Mr. Vitale?
Absolutely.
I had the opportunity to speak about what Alderman Parente just did with our Board of Education. But I think I want to go on record with this elected body to say this is not about the individuals who fill the role of media aid. I, I feel very passionate, as Mr. Smith already acknowledged, about our young people. So when I feel like there's a potential inequity, I hope you appreciate, I give my backup of that, about that, because I'm protecting our young people. But I'm also, I feel equally as passionate for the adults in our system. So this move to eliminate this position is not personal. It does not speak to the individuals, their skill set or their capacity. I, I shared this with our Board of Education the night, I believe, of the vote, that I honor their work, I honor their contributions. Mr. Vitale mentioned the number of years the position has been in the district. Funny thing, "everybody wants progress, but nobody wants change," is a quote I recently heard. So progress is going to cause us a little bit of pain sometimes. And I don't believe that it always has to be about cutting positions and, and causing this level of pain to people. But there, there'll be times that this will occur. So please know that I did not make this decision or make that proposal lightheartedly. It, it weighs on me, I know that. But I also shared with the board that these individuals could potentially have a role in our school system in the future. There are other positions that we're happy to consider them for. The eight positions that we're reconstituting, and then other positions likely that they could be skilled for and qualified for. So please know that we will look for a place for them in Milford schools.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kataya. And I appreciate your presentation and your patience in answering all the questions from the Alderman, as well as, you're very welcome. And also Sue Glennon and Jim Richatelli, thank you again for all your participation and your patience with some of our questions. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to recess.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to recess until Monday, April 27th, 2020, at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
All's? We're in recess. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.